Welcome to the June 21st, 2023 meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a citizens advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. We welcome public comment on those topics for which a public hearing has not yet been held. If you're here to testify for one of our public hearings today, we will, we will call for that testimony during those particular hearings. My name is Eric Casino and I'm the season's chair and I reside in District Two. We'll start our introductions down here and then we'll move over to our online participants.
Scott Nelson, District Three.
Derek Day, District One.
Owen Wheatley, District One.
Barry Halverson, District Two.
Jim Simmons, District Three.
Commissioner Pessinger, are you online?
Yes, Kevin Pessinger, District One.
Thank you very much. With that, I hope everybody's had a chance to look over our agenda and if so, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second, is there any discussion on our agenda? With that, I call for the vote.
Hi.
Commissioner Robinson. Sorry. Commissioner Simmons.
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Hi.
Commissioner Nelson.
Hi.
Commissioner Day.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Casino.
Hi, and Commissioner Pessinger.
Hi.
Thank you. The agenda has been accepted. With that, has everybody had a chance to look over our meeting minutes from our June 7th, 2023 meeting? And if so, I've entertained a motion. Make motion to approve the minutes from the June 7th, 2023 meeting and use the official recording as the record for the meeting. We moved, is there a second? Just. Discussion on the meeting minutes?
Yes. Please three line twenty. Commissioner Nelson is absent. We can correct that.
Oh.
Believe that was you, was that? Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, so Commissioner Halverson seconded the motion for the public hearing, okay. Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
I have Commissioner.
I am not listed as either in attendance or nor absent, but I was in attendance.
Yes, we will add Commissioner Pessinger to attendance. Any other discussion? Call for the vote on the amended meeting minutes from our June 7th, 2023 Planning Commission and set the audio as the official meeting record. Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Hi.
Right.
Commissioner Day.
Hi. Hi, those meeting minutes are accepted. All right. With that, we are going to move on to the public communication portion of our, of our meeting. And as a reminder, again, this is for public communication in general. And if you're here for one of our public hearings that we're going to have later this evening, if you told those comments for that particular public hearing, that'd be great. But if you're here for something other than those two public hearings, we'd love to hear from you. We do have a few rules in and those participating by Zoom, please choose your raise your hand option to address the Planning Commission. You'll be promoted to panels when it's your turn to speak and be seen. To be seen, please turn on your camera. If you're dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. Make sure you also choose star six to unmute yourself. The three minute timer will show on one of the video screens to help keep track of time. And after we do, our online guests will come back to the boardroom and ask for testimony here. So do we have anybody online that would like to address the Planning Commission at this time? All right, with that, we'll move to the boardroom. If there's anybody here that would like to address the Planning Commission, please raise your hand, we'll call you. Give you three minutes. I don't believe anybody is here for anything other than our public hearings that we're going to have later, so. We'll just move on to the next portion of our agenda, which is our first public hearing. Obviously, what's that?
Ten minutes.
Oh, we still have seven minutes. We have seven minutes before we start our public hearing. So I guess what we could do in the meantime is move forward on our agenda to our staff update section. If that's okay, to move forward on staff updates and ask if there are any staff updates at this time outside of the rescheduling of a different public hearing.
I think Maya just had one update in addition to that, if she's available.
Yeah.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Maya Tople, Senior Planner with Community Planning. Aside from the rescheduling of the Forest Lands Conversion Public Hearing, which we do need a motion from the Planning Commission on an official action. The only other update that I have to share with the Planning Commission tonight is that we have started some of our outreach on the Thurston 2045 project. And we mentioned that we had some of our education and outreach staff at the CLO event in the end of May. And just last weekend, we were also at the Juneteenth event at the Regional Athletic Complex and our staff was out at that event. We had over 500 participants at that event and we had a really good reach. We reached seven, 70 individuals just by walking around, being present at the event. Talked to a lot of different folks and we were able to get 41 survey responses by being at that event. So our out, education and outreach staff are starting to attend some of these events that are going on in the community. We got a lot of positive feedback from the folks who were in attendance saying, thank you for coming out to this event that we're, you know, that's already being hosted and we're here for other reasons when we appreciate you being here. So we are looking at what other events are coming up this summer and we are going to be focusing a lot of our efforts on getting out to those events that are already scheduled, that folks are planning on attending for other reasons. And one of the upcoming events that is on our calendar is the Nisqually Pride Festival. So we will have a staff person at that event coming up and in attendance there for the Thurston 2045 project. So just sharing that update. But still in the beginning stages, but we are making some good connections at the existing events that are ongoing.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Maya on that?
Yeah, Maya, have they got any staff going out to the Prairie Days event at Yelm tomorrow?
Prairie Day is on the list. I believe our education and outreach staff will be attending that. And then there's a long list. We have several events already. Let me see if I can pull that up real quick to read a couple. We have a couple of farmers markets on our list. There are the Free Laundry Days by the Union Gospel Mission that we plan to be attending some of those. In addition to that, Food Bank Events, Thurston County Fair, Nisqually Valley BBQ Rally, a Back to School Bash in Rochester. The Latinx Youth Summit is a big one that we hope to have a staff person or a couple of staff persons at. And there are a number of others, but those are kind of the high tier ones that we really want to get folks out to.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Maya on this particular issue? All right, then Maya, I know that staff had asked for us to change a public hearing for the Forest Conversion Ordinance Title 1725. Is there anything that should be said about that for the ask?
Yeah, I will share that we are making this request to move the public hearing based on some feedback we've gotten from stakeholders, both external and internal, and that they would like some additional time to review the code before having an actual public hearing on that. So this is responsive to what we've heard from some of the public members. And allowing that additional month time is not going to be harmful to the project timeline in any way. So we can budget for that on this project and we do want to accommodate those requests.
And so the rescheduled date that you're hoping for is August 19th at 7:00 PM?
The second meeting in August and I believe it's the August 16th at 7:00 PM, yes.
So. With that, if there was a motion to.
I'll move to reschedule the Public Hearing Forest Conversion Ordinance Title 17.25 from July 19th, 2023 to August 16th, 2023 at 7:00 PM.
We moved, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion from the Planning Commission on this move?
Do we need to move the work session as well?
That wouldn't be required with the vote. That would just be an agenda item.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Commissioner Halverson.
Hi.
Commissioner Pessinger.
Hi.
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley. Hi.
Commissioner Nelson.
Hi.
Vice Chair Day.
Hi.
Hi, that motion is passed, so we will be having our public hearing for the Forest Conversion Ordinance on August 16th at 7:00 PM during our regular Planning Commission meeting. Thank you, Maya. With that, are we pushing seven o'clock yet? No, we're still ways off, aren't we? Well, let's go through our calendars. Agenda item number 10. On July 5th, we expect to have a work session on long-term ag. Another one, which would be a public hearing follow-up, is everybody thinking that they will be able to make that particular meeting?
It's a maybe.
We got a maybe, one maybe. Days of maybe, Halverson is absent. With that, we had that, these are a form getting a little bit thin, but we should have enough people if everybody else can make it. Our next meeting after that will be July 10th and it's a special meeting with the Yelm and Thurston County Planning Commissions to discuss the joint plan on July 10th. Is there anybody that does not expect to be able to make that meeting? Making a jump to another. Okay, no for Halverson again. Everybody else thinks they'll be able to make it? All right, good. And then, of course, please update your calendars to reflect our August 16th meeting to be the public hearing for the Forest Conversion Ordinance. But on our regular July 19th meeting, we are expecting to do a work session on long-term ag and probably something else to be determined at this point. So does everybody think they'll be able to make the July 19th meeting? You in Nashville, Parksville? Oh, you're home. Well, it looks like we should have everybody for our July 19th meeting. And we're still a couple of minutes away from being able to hold our public hearing. So I would like to move to good of the order. I want to hold off the discussion on the meeting from this morning because I don't think we'll have enough time for that discussion yet. But if anybody else has anything for the good of the order, now would be a good time to, you got something small or short. All right, well, we're doing things pretty good.
What could we do? Could we talk about, after, we all have a chance to review that meeting, so maybe the next, the next meeting?
If you think we should put that discussion off, I think that'd be fair. Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, do you want to put it on the calendar for the next, the next?
Yeah, in fact, I like that idea a lot, actually, having a specific conversation about it. So for our July 5th meeting, if we can have an agenda item added to have a Planning Commission discussion about the B O C C Planning Commission Joint Meeting from this morning. I think that would be great and then we'll just not worry about that. I'll go to the order today.
And if we could have a link to the Zoom meeting added, just for everybody's ease, that would be.
The link to the YouTube video or?
Or whatever, yeah, that whatever's easiest to, yeah, the YouTube video, I guess, is the easiest to watch.
All right.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything then? Right, well, it looks like we are at seven o'clock finally. So with that, I'm going to start our public hearings for this evening. Our first one is on the POG site-specific land use planning and rezoning amendment. They were here to hold a public hearing on the Comprehensive Plan Docket Item CPA 21, POG Site-Specific Land Use Plan and Rezoning Amendment. If approved, this proposal would amend the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map. There's a sign-in sheet at the entrance of the room. If you wish to testify, please make sure you have signed in at the entrance of the room. If you're on Zoom and wish to testify, please choose the raise your hand option. If you're dialing in to press, press star nine to raise your hand. I will then call on your name to unmute you when it's your turn to speak. You may make sure to also choose the star six unmute to unmute yourself. Each person will have three minutes to testify. We'll call names off the sign-in sheet for oral testimony in the boardroom. When you hear your name, please come forward to testify. Your time may not be given to another person. When testifying, please provide your name and address for the record and we'll ask staff to review public comment timer operation. With that, this public hearing is open and we'll start with a staff presentation with Amelia Schwartz.
Good evening. My name is Amelia Schwartz. I'm an associate planner with Community Planning. Today, we are here to hold a public hearing on proposed amendments to the Future Land Use Map and the Official Zoning Map for Thurston County. The Planning Commission has held a previous work session on the May 7th, on May 17th, 2023, which was almost to public. For this POG land use amendment proposal, written notice of this public hearing was published in the Olympian on May 26, 2023. In addition, a webmail announcement was sent to the Community Planning Division to serve on June 14th, 2023. And a press release was issued on June 9th, 2023. Thurston County Community Planning updated the website with all available documents being considered at this hearing during the comments series. Parts of project information were sent out to property owners within 500 feet of the proposal sites on June 1st, 2023, and given to local establishments to display on June 7th, 2023. It was optional to the establishments. I went to the local espresso stand, the local bar and grill, as well as the Offutt Lake Resort to try to hit up a few different community aspects. We received two written comments and both were in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll start our public testimony with our online guests. And I believe that we only have one so far and that would be Charlotte Person. So if you could identify yourself and tell us where you live and you have three minutes. Charlotte, you're still muted. Charlotte, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Unmute, start video, sorry. Okay, nothing like. Okay, I'm going to start again. All right, I'm Charlotte Persons and I live in Olympia at 903 Glass Avenue. I was a member of the Agriculture Stakeholders Group that met last winter. Then I represented Black Hills Audubon Society, but I am speaking today as an individual.
Are you testifying on the ag or on the POG land?
I'm on the ag. I'm sorry, am I testing, am I speaking for the wrong thing?
Well, don't, don't go away yet because we're going to do that public hearing later this evening after this public hearing.
Okay.
This public hearing is for the POG land use.
All right, then I will, will, I can't actually, you will have to get me out of here. I'm sorry, I can't. There's nothing for me to, to, to go to, apparently.
We'll, we'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else online that would like to testify on the POG Site-Specific Land Use and Zoning Amendment Public Hearing? I can't see if there's anybody with their hand up. We don't. So we do have some guests here that would like to, in the boardroom, that would like to address the Planning Commission on the POG Site-Specific Land Use Zoning Amendment. And the first one would be Jean Hummel. If you'd like to come and address the Planning Commission?
No, I didn't. I didn't put eyes for that.
Okay. And then Lee Reiner, were you here to, to?
No, I'm for the other one, thank you.
Okay. All right, well, it does not look like we have any public testimony on POG, so. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address the Planning Commission on the POG Site-Specific? It does not look that way. Well, with that, this public hearing is closed and we'll start a work session.
I'm sorry to ask, what should be? I do a Mr. POG 50 years ago in town. I don't know what the POG thing is. I came because I own some land and somebody told me over the phone, Maya did, that they're thinking of doing a farm.
That's our next public hearing. There's long-term ag, yeah. It goes till eight o'clock. It's a work.
Yeah, so we'll hop to the next public hearing, whichever everybody's here for.
All right, well, with that, we'll move on to our next public hearing. And this public hearing is on Comprehensive Plan Docket Item CPA 16, the Community Driven Review of Agriculture. There has been a signup sheet. Each person will have three minutes to testify. Names will be called for oral testimony. When you hear your name, please come forward to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When testifying, please provide your name and address for the record. And then we'll ask staff to review the public comment timer. With that, this public hearing is now open and we will ask staff for the opening presentation. That you, Ashley?
I was.
Sorry about that. That's me. I will provide a short summary of the agriculture zoning update hearing that we have tonight. Good evening, Planning Commissioners and public that are with us. Maya Tople, Senior Planner with Community Planning. Tonight's public hearing is on the Agriculture Zoning Update, which is one component of Docket Item CPA 16, Community Driven Review of Agricultural Policies and Programs. This project reviews and considers which lands are cited for designation and zoning as long-term agriculture. Also included in this project are code changes that would further protect agriculturally-used lands through a cluster requirement imposed on new residential development and changes that would clarify standards and also increase flexibility in the types of uses that are allowed within agricultural zones. The proposed amendments would impact the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan Chapters 2, 3, and Appendix C, as well as the Future Land Use and Long-Term Agriculture Map within the Comprehensive Plan, the, excuse me, the Thurston County Code, several chapters within Title 20, and the official zoning map of Thurston County, Washington. Prior to presenting this project to the Planning Commission, the Board of County Commissioners set the scope for which designation criteria to further consider. Community planning staff convened a stakeholder group made up of several agricultural representatives, land trusts, cities, and other interested parties. And we held seven meetings to develop options for the proposed changes to the designation criteria, which are reflected in the options before the Planning Commission and the public for this public hearing tonight. The Planning Commission previously reviewed this item on May 3rd and May 17th and on May 17th scheduled this public hearing. Written notice of this hearing was provided by webmail and legal notice on May 26th of 2023 and a postcard mailing was sent out to all mailing addresses of the affected parcels on May 26th. A press release was issued on June 9th and we did a second webmail on June 15th. Additionally, staff did outreach through Facebook posts and we posted those twice the week of May 29th and then this week, just yesterday, on June 20th. And we had a couple of additional stakeholder meetings with Olympia Master Builders on May 24th and also the Washington Farm and Forestry Association on June 14th to discuss some of the proposed amendments. To date, we've received 51 written comments and those were provided to the Planning Commission today after the close of the written comment period. And many of those are about, questions about specific properties or general support with some suggested changes. I will go into the details of the major themes around those comments following the close of the oral public hearing. And that concludes my remarks. I'm happy to pass it back to the chair.
Great, thank you very much. With that, we'll move on.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
You said that, something about the written public comment ending?
Yes, our written public comment period ended on noon today and that was consistent with the legal notice, press release, and webmail that went out.
That was not consistent with our motion to hold a hearing.
This is standard for all public hearings. Our public comment periods end at noon and then the public, the writ, the oral comment period begins at 7:00 PM. But if you would like, I'm happy to include any written comments we've received up until the close of this hearing and I will include those in the next Planning Commission packet for the July 5th meeting.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I just, I mean, that's, we've always done it, that the Planning Commission closes the hearing and that's when written public, written public comment is not due until, you know, if somebody's coming to speak, they probably have something written. They need to be able to turn that in to us. And our motion was to hold a hearing. I think, I do not believe that the Planning Commission has ever said or agreed to and telling people that they have to turn materials in before the hearing.
So Maya, are we able to still accept these written comments through the end of our public hearing?
I'm happy to include written comments through the end of tonight. Whatever I received, I've only received two additional that came in after the noon cutoff time. And anything that you receive in person tonight, I'm happy to include and send in a packet to the Planning Commission. I do want to state that our standard procedure has been to cut off at 3:00 PM for the last, gosh, five or six years, that's been our standard procedure for all Planning Commission public hearings. We only moved it to a noon cutoff time so we could form it for, excuse me, forward the packet to the Planning Commission and provide you with time to review the email comments that we receive. But if you'd like me to include things that you receive through the end of tonight, I'm happy to do that.
Michelle, really, did you have something?
Well, maybe this is something we might want to discuss on another, at another meeting or at a later time.
Uh, yeah, I, I think the solution for right now is to, to include all the public testimony, written and oral, through the end of the public hearing on this particular issue. And maybe tonight at our, during our good of the order, we could discuss that particular procedure if we have time tonight.
Okay.
Okay, well, with that, then we will move forward to our public testimony and we'll start here in the boardroom. And everybody will have three minutes to address the Planning Commission. And when you do come up, please identify yourself and the part of the county that you live in. And we'll start out with Lori Barta. We do have a timer up there to help keep track.
Hi, I'm Lori Barta. I live at 7018 Churchill Road in Tonino. I am a farmer. Look at my tan. Um, I've owned my property just under 70 acres for 20 years plus. That is my long-term investment for my retirement. I'm of retirement age. Look at my gray hair and my wrinkles. You're taking this away from me. If you put my property, that was one house for five acres, you're taking away from me $1.5 million at today's rates. I can't retire. No, I'm upset about this. If you put me in the cluster, okay, the cluster thing, I can only then subdivide. Well, it's, I can still do it, but not as much. So I figured, that's about $700,000. Now, I'm a farmer. I work probably harder than most people, believe it or not. Doesn't look like it, but I sure do. I work way over 50 hours a week. I have for the last 13 years, 14 years. I raised a son, put him through college, single mom. I do my own hay. I take care of my animals. I work damn hard. Now, I have not been able to do an IRA because I was raising my son late in late in age. I don't have a 401K. I don't have state retirement. I don't have any other retirement except my land. And that was my long term retirement investment, and it pisses me off. I'm sure you can hear that, that you're going to take this away from me. Now, my land is in the baseline number one scenario. It's not in long term, long term scenario one or two, but it is in the cluster. And I actually really don't think that my farmland is commercially viable, actually. No one else wants to do what I do. It's too hard. It's just too hard. I'm a raw milk dairy. I milk twelve cows. I make a living, okay? No one, no one in this room would want to do what I'm doing. No one. My customers love that I provide raw milk to them. Olympia Food Co-op over here carries my milk. I go all the way up to Federal Way. I go to Monticello and some down in Centralia. I have worked hard, and you're going to take this away from me? I object. I object to you guys doing this. I mean, most, most farmers, most farmers, this is the way that they, they build their money. Most genuine farmers do it this way. And I would surely hope that you would, before you take my developmental rights away. Sure, if you want to pay me one point five million, I might consider that. I may. All right, but boy, don't take it away from me. I've worked darn hard and, oh, on another suggestion, really quick. The soil maps are wrong. My soil is not what you guys say my soil is. Two parcels down for me, you have it in also these scenarios. That address is six one oh one Churchill Road. That is steep land, clay soil, forested, seven homes on that land, one owner, and that's in this long term. So you guys are wrong on some of these, and I think you should look to correct it. Don't take it away from me, and if you do pay me, please.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next, we have Betsy Norton.
Hi there. My name's Betsy Norton. I'm at fourteen oh five Evergreen Park Drive Southwest in Olympia. Nine eight five oh two. I just thought I'd bring up a picture. I don't know if you guys can see this, and I will give it to you. It has a couple of links. This is the Oregon spotted frog, which is covered as an endangered species, which is covered under HCP with Thurston County. And I'm just reading this on behalf of the Black Hills Audubon Society. The Black Hills Audubon Society is concerned about the impact that the current proposals to expand long term agriculture zoning could have on the Oregon spotted frog, critical areas in Thurston County, and on the availability of OSF mitigation lands to meet a Thurston County Habitat Conservation Plan obligations. Maps for all three proposed LTA designations in the planning commission's packet aren't sufficiently detailed to see their exact relationship to current critical areas designated for Oregon spotted frogs, but there looks to be a fair amount of overlap. These critical areas must be conserved for the threatened species. Also, the Habitat Conservation Plan requires six hundred and eighteen acres of mitigation lands to be set aside for taking of Oregon spotted frogs. Expanding the LTA designation will encourage farmers on these lands to continue farming instead. Black Hills Audubon Society supports conservation of farming, but current regulations permit farmers to drain the farmlands and to unblock drainage ditches. Often, the seasonally wet working lands and drainage ditches also support breeding populations of the Oregon spotted frogs. So in closing, please consider this question. Will the county be able to find six hundred and eighteen acres of mitigation lands to meet the demands of the HCP if the LTA designation is expanded as proposed? That's it.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Lee Reiner. That'd be fine. I'll come back to you. Mary Urbach.
Good evening, council members, planning commission members. Mary Urbach, my office address is one two four one seven twelfth Street East, Edgewood. And I am here tonight as land use counsel for Nielsen Pacific, who operates Holright Company, which has two mines located at the intersection of Old Pacific Highway and Durgin. One is the northern mine, the Squali One, and the southerly mine is the Squali Two. Then, under the baseline proposal, neither mine is included in your LTA. Under Scenario one, the southerly portion, the Squali Two is included. Under Scenario two, both mines are included in your proposal. You have a lot of material before you that you have gone through already. And I'm just going to direct your attention to two considerations that were submitted with our materials that we submitted dated June sixteenth. First is the basic determination of what constitutes an agricultural use. In your staff report, the primary focus is on the land use classification by NRCS, whether it's prime farmland or not. We reached out to NRCS. A copy of the email from NRCS is included in the materials. The Soil Scientist for the Thurston County Region for NRCS determined that mines designated and classified as pits, and I'm quoting, are considered to be a miscellaneous land area and not a soil component. So by default, they are not even eligible for a farmland classification. So to directly answer our question, no pits are not prime farmland. So by definition, they're not an agricultural use of long term agricultural significance and can't be designated as such. Then I'd like to turn your attention to the second consideration, which even assuming that you do move forward and determine that you do desire, contrary to NRCS, designate this as prime farmland. The co-designation as agricultural and MRL is not appropriate and doesn't remedy the flaw in designating the land as agriculture. Under your co-designation, under your policies, under your comprehensive plan at Chapter three dash thirty-nine, it indicates that uses such as screening, washing, and crushing are not allowed under MRL zone when they're co-designated with an ARL. So that basically eviscerates the elements of a mine. Basic principles include extraction and crushing, washing, processing. And this is contained in the Mining Act under RCW Chapter seventy-eight point forty-four. So it's interesting to note that the Mining Act was amended in nineteen ninety-three, two years after the Growth Management Act went into effect. And the purpose of that amendment was to ensure that there's statewide consistency in the definition of mining operations. And those operations are specifically identified under seventy-eight forty-four oh three one, which includes crushing, screening, processing, washing. So you are in direct conflict with the Mining Act, which was one of the purposes of the amendment. The other purpose in the findings under the act is to ensure that from, there's a recognition of the long term significance of mining for the economic well being and necessity for infrastructure, for right of way, road construction, utility construction. There are basic components. And.
We're over.
So we would ask that you do not designate the Nielsen properties as ag use and that you should consider, in order to be consistent with state law and your own policies, which speak to long term conservation of mineral resource lands, which was the purpose of your designation in two thousand and twenty, where you hired a well respected geotech firm to determine appropriate lands that you not preclude what is considered as related elements of a mining operation. Thank you, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Next up, we have Richard Nathan.
My name is Richard Nathan. I was born in Olympia, Washington, nineteen forty. I live at ninety-one forty Delphi Road Southwest, Olympia, Washington. I might be senior as an Olympia resident to anybody on the council, so I, like when you were talking about Mr. POG, I knew Mr. POG. Anyway, I'm really disappointed. I've been three times a commissioners in the city of Olympia have stopped me from retiring, basically. I had an acreage that was designated county up on the west side, and I was going, it was already sold. I had a buyer for it. It was up to thirteen acres, and then they changed the zoning to it had to be density zoning. And the person who's going to buy it was going to put four family homes on it and have some nice acreage really close to town. That messed up when retirement. The property I purchased, I purchased in nineteen seventy for thirty-four thousand dollars, if you can imagine that. Twenty-three acres, and everybody told me that's crazy. That's fine. I went to Alaska, worked in an Eskimo land for about nineteen years. Shortly after I got there, though, the commissioner, the side or the commission decided it was one to five acres. And I'm thinking, gee, I brought that piece of property because I like wildlife. I really do, except the eastern squirrels. But I do like wildlife. I do like to see the little deer that comes to me. I like to see, not the bears eat the deers, but I like to see bears roaming around and things like that. It's one to five. I wrote to commissioners and said, hey, deer don't live on five acres. If I have to divide my property into five acres, then up at home, 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 and home, all that, you've lost my wildlife. So I tried to keep it as is, but I don't want somebody to tell me I have to grow whatever I have to grow on it. I mow about four acres of it. I keep it in good shape for all the wildlife. I don't want somebody else who never lived there, who isn't from Thurston County for years and years and years, tell me I now have to go raise what? Wheat, oats, barley? It's not fair. This was my retirement. I wrote when I came out. I wanted to go along Delphi Road. I want to do two, about a hundred sixty feet, hundred sixty feet, hundred sixty feet, five hundred sixty feet. I was going to sell one piece of property off every, every five to ten years, and that would help my retirement. The rest of it, I wanted to keep as is. I am not an agriculture person like the first lady. She works her butt off with her cows and everything else. I, I don't, I don't, I don't have the strength anymore at eighty-three years old. So please, look at the individuals. Look at what your decisions do to their life. It's not fair for people sitting in a boardroom to make those decisions for them. And I ask that you not make it for me. One other thing, I talked to Maya earlier today. I thought we had at least a day or two to write. So you had something. I would like permission to at least turn something in by tomorrow evening to somebody, and I thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Up next, we have Ken Miller.
Good afternoon, good evening, members of the Thurston County Planning Commission. I wish to first publicly thank Ashley for helping some of us through the bureaucratic language, some of us landlords, to help us better understand the potential consequences of these proposals. She was also very helpful setting up a very last minute meeting with some who had ignored this postcard notifications because we don't have ag land, so it doesn't seem to apply to us, so in the waste can it went. We are Bonnie and Ken Miller. We're residents of Thurston County for over thirty years. We have accumulated a hundred and eight acres between Scott Lake and Miller Savannah State Park. We live on the farm and have spent the bulk of the last thirty years rehabilitating this designated forest land. About ninety percent of our thirty year investments are in one scenario or the other for potential rezoning to long term agriculture. Our written testimony submitted earlier, which obviously you haven't had a chance to read, provides several concerns and suggestions for win win ways to help improve your ultimate recommendations to the commissioners. We've divided these thoughts into three buckets, kind of a reality check you've heard a little bit about already today about facts that play on this topic. Also, some suggestions and comments about fairness to all landowners. And lastly, some comments pertinent to our particular land, which I won't talk about tonight. In summary, my three or four page written testimony says forest landowners were not effectively notified of this potential action. Designated forest land should be categorically excluded as it is not fitting the state definition of agricultural land. Rezoning some specific lands you heard also about today, based solely on the current criteria, is nonsensical at best. Ground truthing to confirm soil maps and the viability of commercially significant agriculture without irrigation rights must be incorporated. Clustering requirements should or must be incentivized somehow, to be fair. Taking our property value without compensation is wrong, and it's inconsistent and discriminatory compared to how other similarly affected county landowners have been treated. You have a responsibility to treat the landowners and resources fairly. Both can be accomplished with little more effort towards win win fairness in the final proposal. So please show landowners you care about those of us that have created legacies for our next generation over the last decades. And also, please come to our annual family forest picnic Saturday morning to learn a little bit more about why we deserve respect and appreciation from this commission. Thank you very much for listening. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to Jay Yancy.
Thank you. My name's Jake Yancy with Track and Y Ranch. I live at two nine zero one one oh fourth Avenue Southwest. I'm a first generation cattle rancher. I have a wife and two daughters and stuff. They'd be here today, but they're off riding horses. We currently market our cattle directly to consumers. We work in a four county area currently, and we've acquired since two thousand and fifteen five hundred and twenty-five acres with the majority of that ground being operated right here in Thurston County. I'm a attendee of Wall Wall Community College in WSU, where I studied ag business and went on to spend five years managing ranches from Washington, Oregon, Montana. I come to you today as a private citizen, rancher, and father. In two thousand and fifteen, officially, we started Track and Y Ranch with five acres on our house. In that, two thousand and four, we purchased that same property for a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Today, that same property is worth six hundred thousand dollars at a cost of almost sixty thousand dollars an acre. With a net income of most cattle ranchers of four hundred to five hundred dollars on an animal following a two year production cycle and stuff, you can see how money and costs can quickly get out of hand for properties. If you break that down by the day, it's seventy cents a day per animal is what I make. Currently, we're unable, we, our current problem was that we were unable to find land at that time as property cost today ranged between twenty and fifty thousand dollars an acre, and we've heard that described today by other folks that have testified. While the national average reported by the USDA in two thousand and twenty-two is three thousand While the national average reported by the USDA in two thousand twenty-two is three thousand eight hundred dollars an acre. Once again, a hundred percent of our properties are owned by other operators, and we'd love to own our own at one point. Today, we currently have sixty-one parcels. Quarter of those are privately owned, while the remainder are in conservation easements and owned as such. About fifty percent of those properties have endangered species on them to include the Oregon spotted frog and the Mazama pocket gopher. We're nationally recognized with our preservation work with grazing with the Oregon spotted frog. Your ranchers today are some of your best conservation partners. Since two thousand fifteen, we've lost, lost over fifty acres of our properties to development and the development currently of over a hundred and twenty homes. Current zoning in Thurston County is one of the biggest contributing factors to farm loss. With that in mind, we've almost lost a thousand acres of historical property, or we've lost thousands of acres of historical ag property already in this county. For instance, fifty, our fifty acres previously owned to include the Barcliff property, which is now the Mearset Extension in Tumwater is now that where we used to calve out calves next to the high school, and my daughters used to watch is now the location of seventy homes. Directly next to that, the Dolman Ranch, next to Black Hills High School, will go on to lose hundreds of acres of prime ag land to be over seven hundred homes to forever be lost. I applaud ranchers like Colvin Ranch for having interest in putting their properties in long-term ag and keeping with the generations of it being in agriculture. Land acquisition is the number one factor stopping kids from getting in agriculture today, as reported. Chris Dolman said it best himself, the owner of Beaver Creek Ranch in Maytown in June fourth, two thousand twenty, at the Capital Press. One important thing I've learned from my dad is be a good steward of land. A year later, in two thousand twenty-two, he proposed to turn the, that same farm into development that he came forward and asked, and it's currently on the docket again. I ask it as you read in the FFA Creed, "I believe the future of agriculture without faith, I believe in the future of agriculture with a faith born not of words but of deeds." Now is the time for this committee to make it practical for young ranchers like myself and my daughters to have continuation of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Randy Sullivan.
Thank you. I'm Randy Sullivan. I live at forty-seven eleven Hundred and First Lane. We purchased twenty-five acres in late oh six, oh seven. It is indicated to be targeted for the long-term egg. I did receive one postcard in May. If anything else has been sent, I don't recall seeing anything come in to me. So I didn't really come here tonight prepared for turning in written comments or even standing here at the moment. But it sounds like things are a little further along than than I realized. I did come into the planning department a couple of weeks ago to try to look at the map and all, wasn't successful online. And so anyway, that's kind of my current situation. Our property is zoned one in five at this time, and we are in an ag tax classification. When we bought the property, it was timber property or a timber classification. Wasn't really commercial timber. We set about turning it into a little bit of a small grazing operation for children and grandchildren for livestock operation. And so that's kind of where we are to give you a little bit of a feel of this property. As we tried to grow some kind of a crop on their grass, we were not able to till it at all. I agree with a previous comment. The soil snaps are not real accurate, even on the USDA web site. We have very gravelly rocky soils. You could not plow it. You can't disc it. Alls we could do was level it as best we could and throw grass seed on top of the rocks and hope it found a little bit of dirt. So like right now, a good share of our property is already brown. Wouldn't be anything that I feel could be utilized from a long-term commercial type ag operation. I have a little bit of background in that. I was raised on a farm in Idaho. I spent thirty-plus years with the Farm Credit System, which is a large ag co-op doing agricultural lending and appraisals. And so I, I guess I would just, I feel that probably because we have an ag tax classification, we did that only because it was already in forest converted to ag when we opened it up to trying to get a little bit of grazing land. And so, yeah, our plan certainly, as many others, was to utilize the one-in-five zoning as children and grandchildren came along. And I haven't heard anything really mentioned about compensation, but would hope that would be a big part of what needs to come out of all this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Dave Cowan.
Good evening. My name is Dave Cowan. I live at seventy-six forty-seven Libby Road Northeast out in the Boston Harbor area. I apologize for my ad hoc cuff testimony at night. I didn't come here planning a testimony, testify. But the first comment I wanted to make is is related to the administrative process. Myself, like the other gentleman, the first I've learned of this was I got the postcard in the mail, so it made it to me. And I made sure I blocked off the date and showed up there at night. I was mistaken. I thought this was kicking off the process. I don't know why I had that assumption, but I've been involved in a number of, you know, Thurston County hearings as well as other counties throughout my life, and I thought this was kind of the, you know, introduction. And then eventually, as weeks went on, we'd have a chance to provide written comments, and I certainly would have. But I, again, shame on me, messed up. I have several parcels in Thurston County. None of them are suitable for ag. But I do come from a strong ag background. I've been involved in ag all my life. I own a four thousand acre calo ranch down in Southern Oregon, and we do actively manage that as a, as a ranching operation. When I bought my parcels here, at one point with one of them, I had intentions of bringing, in fact, I did. We brought stairs and heifers up and grazed them and kept books on the weight gains and eventually concluded the land was unsuitable for cattle because the protein level is quite low compared to what we have in in Oregon. And I could go through a lot of that, but I'm conscious of the clock. The other point I want to make, and most of my land by way is forest, so I was a little mystified when, when, you know, agriculture, because it's, it's forest. And obviously, the soil depth, the clay, lack of irrigation, right? Just, there's a long list of reasons why it's not suitable for ag. But apart from that, I did want to mention one important aspect of ag. And that is my cattle ranch down in Oregon. I, we've had that for twenty-something years, like we've had our Thurston County parcels. And one of the problems you have with ag, and I echo the comment, is it's a very difficult way of earning a living. In fact, and I'm, I'm regressing a little here, but had I not built a ninety-acre solar plant on my cattle ranch in Oregon, I'd be out of business today. Okay, it took that to subsidize that operation, and we have very good feeds and very good hay down there. But one of the problems we do have is there's many jurisdictions that, that have enhanced an ag and they conflict, okay? What NRCS wants, which makes a lot of sense, Fish and Wildlife don't want. And I'm aware of the clock, and I go fast here. I could tell you stories all night, but I can see that happening here. The, within a week of getting this card, we also got, they did a little better than Thurston County, frankly. It was a nice detailed letter from the Nature Conservee saying they wanted to include our property in their boundary, okay? And I can tell you from having a ranch for all my life, the riparian areas with, you know, water, cattle and streams, and the Nature Conservee wanting to protect the watershed, that's a conflict with with ag, unfortunately. So I would just ask that you guys, from the get-go, figure out who are all the jurisdictions that are going to have a voice and a stakeholder in our properties, our respective properties, and settle that amongst yourselves, because there's, I can see it already. And there's a number of conflicts, and I've lived it, not only all my life, but as an owner-operator, twenty, twenty-some years in Oregon. Thank you. I'm out of time.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Alex Nielsen.
President of the County Board, but deciding not to testify.
All right, thank you very much. Elaine O'Neil.
Elaine O'Neil, five zero four five Churchill Road, Tenino. Like the earlier gentleman, this will be a little bit ad hoc because I was only made aware of these changes last week, I believe it was, through another organization that I'm associated with that's primarily forestry-focused. But I do have both designated forest land and ag land. I'm currently not in the block, but I'm adjacent and actually just down the road from Lori, so somewhat affected. I would echo what I'm hearing from the other testifiers is that this really isn't ready for primetime. There are so many problems with the identification of the sites that are proposed in terms of agricultural soils. They actually have forests on them. There's some conflicts with the requirements for other uses. And I think there's one other thing that we're perhaps missing in the bigger picture. As I said, I'm mostly involved in, in forest, working with small forest landowners. And we did a recent study, University of Washington conducted this study on behalf of the, the the state legislature, looking at what's happening with small forest landowners across the board. And the prediction there that was that we were going to lose nine percent of forest land, small forest lands within nine years by twenty thirty. And what this proposal does, so you've done this analysis and you've said, okay, we're going to change this designation into long-term ag. And so we're just, but in fact, the rest of the county, rural county can absorb that growth, that population growth. So you're shoving the problem from long-term ag into long-term forest land or land that is currently designated as forest land. And meanwhile, you have this push to try to keep that land as forest land. And so we're coming into a conflict here, and the people that are stuck in the middle are the forest landowners and the ag landowners. And there perhaps needs to be something that's a little bit broader and probably something that involves more of the landowners involved and not just the various planners. I respectfully disagree with the other guy who said, are you planning, guys? Get your act together and figure it out. I think we need to be at the table to be able to provide the kind of commentary and the kind of ideas that could provide a win-win. So that's my two cents worth on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Ted Levingham. Tim Levingham, I'm sorry.
I don't have any.
No comments? Thank you. Bonnie Blessing.
Hi, my name's Bonnie Blessing, six one two three North Hill Drive Southwest Olympia, Washington. I sent in some notes earlier today to the planning commission, and I mainly came here to listen. I'm pretty familiar with where the spotted frog occurs, and it's, it's really in very rare places, very unique places. I'm impressed that anybody has them, and I do encourage the county to consider where they occur and the implications of zoning whatever on, on those parcels, because they're so rare, and you do need to get quite a few of them. And secondly, I looked up the different critical areas ordinances, and I'm confused whether is ag land going to be under the ag, ag ordinance? And is rural residential going to be under the rest of the critical areas ordinance? Because it just, I kind of scratch my head and think that it seems like the CAO for the rural residential is actually like super stricter than the ag. Even though we have this VSP program going, and I was also reading like the twenty twenty-two wetland guidance for CAO from the Department of Ecology, and they say that low impact to wetlands is open space, moderate is either like hang or careful grazing or residential at less than one unit per acre. And then high, high, high impact to a wetland is high-density housing, where there's more per acre. And I think you can really use a lot of best available science out there, and there may be ways to protect Oregon spotted frogs on rural residential, one to five, one to ten, one, one to twenty. If they do occur on long-term ag, I really hope that the county can work with the landowners that, that have these very rare breeding locations where the frogs actually breed. They're super rare. There's only, there's such a small number of those out there that hopefully you can find those and make sure that, you know, they have appropriate management on those sites. And I'm not certain that the current agricultural ordinance is quite ready for, quite suitable for that. So I thank you for your hard work on the rezoning of rural residential to long-term ag. It's challenging to balance those needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bruce Morgan.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Morgan. I live at one two two eight Oak Drive Southeast, which is just to the east of South End of Tilly. And my three hundred acres that we have in the family, most of it was part of the Telly Homestead. In fact, my property is not impacted by either the map, any of the three scenarios that I was able to find online. I don't know why. It's DFL. It's designated forest land. It's eighty-acre parcels. It's three hundred acres altogether. But it isn't. It isn't. No, it's NRCS says it's prime farmland. You know, just to make a one hundred by one hundred-foot garden, I took out over two hundred thousand pounds of rock, big rock, and had to haul in topsoil and more compost, and it, just to have a garden. This is not, this, this has not been groundproofed at all. And the property east of me, south of Scatter Creek, have a forty-three-acre parcel, thirty-three acres of it is in one of your scenarios. To the west of me, a thirty-acre parcel that was one of the reserved parcels when they created Frog Hollow, it's in one of your scenarios. It makes no sense, no groundproofing on anything. I've read Ken Miller's comments, his written comments, and I certainly have to agree with him. This is not a prime proposal to get to the commission yet. I don't see it ready for that. And you know, I am a member of the working group, the VSP Working Group for Thurston County, so I've been working these issues actively all the time I've been down here since nineteen ninety-nine. And I farm. I do. I raise endangered species. I've been trying for ten years to get Washington wildlife to plant spotted frogs on my property. It would be the first spotted frogs in the, in the Scatter Creek drainage that we know of. And yet, bureaucratically, it seems to be hung up. You know, we can only do so much. Please take time to look at this more carefully before you send it on to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morgan. Ms. Reiner, are you ready to testify?
Yes, thank you. I'm, Ms. Reiner, forty-year resident of Thurston County, twenty-one oh three Harrison. I too have friends who are farmers in rural Thurston County. They were unable to come tonight. As you can hear, there is a lot of confusion regarding these things, but many of us support the long-term agricultural push of many people. Let's face it, we all like to eat, and we all want to make sure the agricultural lands are still here for future generations. Yes, there are problems. One of the problems is designating mines as agricultural land. You know, basically the extraction of rock is not farmland. It, it, the definition, as was said by another person that testified, shows that mining has no place in agricultural land designation. So that was one issue that I wanted to bring up. Another was the critical area discussion. Let's face it, the critical area, we're looking at flooding, we're looking at wetlands, we're looking at areas around streams. We have to preserve these and we, I don't know if the agricultural long-term work talks about these critical areas closely enough, gives enough detail. We all have to preserve these streams, these wetlands for future generations. And as was discussed tonight, we have endangered species that must be preserved for future generations. We're all going to be in the ground, but future generations are going to need these aspects in order to live here in Thurston County. The H C P maps, habitat conservation maps are having problems in terms of the soils. We have to look at our soils for the gopher issue. We have to look at our soils to see if they are indeed represented in these maps. And many of us have questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the boardroom that didn't sign up but would like to address us? Please come up. Let us know who you are and where you live.
Name is Gene Hummel. Live at five three three one Puget Road Northeast. Now, we don't have 300 acres, but we have 18 acres, 10 agriculture and 10 and 10, or nine in timber. And the question I would have is this wouldn't affect us a lot, but it would affect us immediately because I'm sure when it goes into agricultural use land, it will no longer be an open space agriculture use or open space timber, which the taxes are very, very low for us and it helping us get by because land use and taxes keep going up. Real estate taxes keep going up. So I don't know if you could answer what that raise would be in taxes if it went to agriculture rather than open space. But I'm sure it'd be considerable. It always seems like when the government comes up with a good plan, we have to pay for it. You know, with the government, we're here to help you. You know, it's a joke, but that's the way everybody feels. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anybody else here that'd like to address the claim? Please come up, sir.
My name is Wendell Bell. This property that we're discussing is 8727 146th Lane, Southwest Olympia, 98512. Been a resident of Thurston County about 65 years and I just was notified this brought to my attention a week ago. So I, Maya talked to me this afternoon, so I'm totally unprepared. But I have to agree with your first speaker here about, this is my retirement. So we're taking, I don't know the exact dollar amount that it would cut, you know, doing it one per 20 versus a one per five. The site we're speaking of is 40 acres. But yeah, I'm, I'm absolutely new to this, you know, as far as what's going down. I don't know if you're looking for ag land, the quality of the ground. Scott helps me hit. It, it's not the best ag ground, you know? Yes, we do raise hay on it. But is it, I have better farms with better farm ground, you know, ag ground. But anyway, I'm fairly new at this, but the retirement, it's a big dollar. So you're wiping this out. So that's pretty much what I have to say tonight. So any questions for me at all?
No, but thank you for coming in. We appreciate it.
Okay. And is the written, can I comment anymore in written at all?
You can, but those comments, instead of coming to the planning commission, will then be forwarded directly to the board of county commissioner. So everybody can still write and speak and all that, but instead of going through us, we'll just go directly to the board.
Okay.
Yeah. So everybody will still be heard.
Should we speak to Maya or should I?
I can help coordinate with that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Is there anybody else in the boardroom that would like to address the planning commission? All right, we're going to move on to our online guests and see if there would like to speak and I can't read that first name. Can we promote Steve Gerske? Steve, you'll have to unmute yourself to be able to be heard.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I don't know if you can see me too. I'm Steve Gisaka, 4625 Oyster Bay Road. And I just purchased my 23 acre property, zoned residential one to five just last year at market price reflecting the residential zoning. And rezoning my property, so I paid full retail price, if you will. Res zoning my property as ag land will value the property at only a fraction of what I paid for it, not even 12 months ago. So rezoning will have a severe and destructive impact on my finances and my savings for retirement. As other testifiers have also said, impacting my quality of life and ruining my retirement plans. I'm fully reliant on social security and my savings and my land holdings at this stage of life. Also, the Thurston County Planning and Permits Department, also known as the Building Development Center now, I believe, told me just a few months ago that the parcel could be developed, at least the section along Oyster Bay Road could be developed with a wetland buffer adjustment and environmental impact assessment. So one county office gives me the green light to proceed with the development and permitting process. And then your council has a completely different incongruous plan. Where's the consistency even within the county? So in summary, rezoning by government edict is almost like something out of feudal times when dictator ruler could tax rezone and acquire, even acquire landowner's property at his or her discretion. And I think that this is a classic case of government overreach. If the county does go through with this program, then property owners, as other testifiers have also said, have to be duly compensated or what is happening here amounts almost to theft. The L T A program in particular will have major impact on people's lives. The quality thereof, which will be severely impacted by this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Loretta Sepin.
Hello, I am Loretta Sepin. I live in Olympia, Washington, and I'm a supporter of farmland preservation. For that reason, I support moving ahead to add the, the soils that need to be designated as long-term agriculture consistent with the Growth Management Act requirements. I can see that you have a very challenging task ahead to thread the needle to decide how to handle some of the other issues or even actually soils issues as you make a final proposal to the board of county commissioners. I've shared my thoughts on those other criteria, my written comments. My main concern is that it's imperative that the county step up to pay the landowners for their lost land value as they become L T A properties. 30 years ago, when the L T A, existing L T A land was designated, the impacted landowners were promised that there would be a transfer development rights process that would result in payment for their lost land values. Just one developer in Olympia purchased just development rights on 181 acres and none of the other landowners received any compensation. That cannot happen again. I realize it's probably not in the purview of the planning commission to speak to that directly in your proposal, but I request that when you send forward whatever proposal you come up with, that you make sure that you state that the community expects compensation for the lost land value, that that's an imperative. The county can take and must take some other actions as well. And as we've worked on these issues, I have three related actions come to mind. None of them are ripe for immediate action and they probably should all roll into the comp plan update. But those three include answering the question about whether McAllister Springs aquifer recharge area should be or should not be designated for L T A. Creating a simple way for owners of small properties to opt into some kind of protective program and consideration of the thousands of acres of soils of statewide importance for possible designation in the future. I thank you for the work that you're doing now and will have to do it in the future to frame a good proposal related to long-term agriculture.
Thank you very much. Up next, we, do we have anybody else on Zoom that would like to address the planning commission? If so, raise your hand. Charlotte Parsons.
Hi, I'm going to say what I did before, a little bit. Anyway, I'm Charlotte Parsons. I live at 903 Glass Avenue in Olympia. And I was a member of the Agriculture Stakeholders Group that met last winter. And for that, I represented Black Hills Audubon Society, but I'm speaking today as an individual. I was shocked to find out how much agricultural land Thurston County has lost in the last two decades. Almost twice as much as neighboring counties such as Pierce that also suffer pressure for development. The blame is in part the current system of L T A designation that protects a smaller number of farms. You as commissioners have the opportunity to make recommendations to correct this. We need L T A designation to protect as many acres as possible. That means reducing the minimum size for L T A designation to 15.5 acres. Or as Loretta Seppen said, having some other way for small farms to opt in to protection because the median size of a farm in our county is only, is less than seven acres. But we also need to expand L T A designation in a way that will support farmers. It is only just to compensate them for the loss of revenue that they could receive from their, turning their land to other uses. This was the strongest recommendation of the agriculture stakeholder group. So I was disappointed to see the new cop plan language is unchanged in terms of funding sources. I asked the planning commission to recommend no expansion of L T A designation until a new funding plan is put into place. That plan should compensate farmers whose lands were designated L T A 30 years ago as well as farmers with newly designated L T A parcels. You can stop the loss of farms and farmland in our county and preserve our best soils while still being fair to farmers.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else online that would like to address the planning commission? I don't see anybody. We'll call one more time to the boardroom. If anybody changed their mind and would like to speak.
Can I add a very great comment? Just 20 seconds worth?
Please do.
Thank you. And I will be great. In Oregon, one of the things they do to designate ag is the dollar that is produced, okay? For example, for actually for the farm master show and $8,000 throws in gold. I just, it'd be nice to consider that, dude. If we're doing ag land and it ought to be real ag land, I mean, a real ag offer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting me speak.
All right. With that, does anybody else want to address the planning commission? Seeing nobody else wanting to testify today, we'll close this public hearing and move on to our next item. Our next item is a, thank you, everybody that came in to testify to the planning commission. And we understand that this is a pretty important issue for the whole county and farmers in particular. Our next item up for this evening is a work session and a possible recommendation on the POGS site-specific land use rezone amendment. And that is going to be presented by Amelia Schwartz.
Just really quick, if anyone, actually, I'm just going to say, I want to make sure I got business cards. That's all.
We'll give them a couple of minutes to.
Maybe we should do this first and do POGA first.
Do.
Do long-term ag first.
There'll be a long-term ag work session?
The POG shouldn't take very long.
Something tells me we're going to have multiple, multiple work sessions.
Yeah, I'm sure we are. That's why I'm saying, you know, it's, I mean, I guess it's maybe too late now because a lot of people left. People are here to hear for that issue. There's, nobody's here for POG. So if we're going to spend, but I mean, we've only got 20 minutes scheduled for long-term ag.
I mean, I think Scott is our problematarian.
I mean, if nobody, if that's, if we only get it the other way, that's fine, but I just, it's just a suggestion.
Well, I, my big concern is that we run out of time to finish POG and POG is something that we should be able to get done tonight and be done with it. Where L T A is going to be something that is probably going to require at least one, if not two more work sessions. So for tonight, I would prefer it to be the filler topic.
I'll try to talk.
But we do, we probably will do some talk on the L T A still for sure, but we got Amelia all set up here to run through POG. Let's, let's just do that real quick. All right.
Ready to go?
We are.
All right. So this is on CPA 21, the POG site specifically, and you should plan and rezoning amendment. Work session number two, your review of the public comments, and I will be requesting recommendations for this project. Just a quick refresh, the POG site, the site specifically, and use plan and rezoning amendment affects one to two parcels within the mid-county area southwest of Offutt Lake. You can very slightly see it in this picture in circle. Here's a closer up. This is the parcel that has been requested by its owner for consideration. All right. For this, this is part of the 2022, 2023 Comprehensive Plan Docket. The property owner has requested to amend the land use and rezone a 1.5 acre parcel out 12625 Old Highway 99 Southeast. Currently designated as rural residential slash resource, one unit per five acres. And they are requesting a change to neighborhood convenience commercial. Etricee, two written comments in support of the requested. You receive two written comments in support of the requested POG amendments. We did not receive any additional comments. However, in addition to the comments, we did receive two questions. They were related to where is this and what is the proposed use? I, of course, answered the where is this, and then the second one couldn't answer because I use isn't proposed a designation. So some of the questions from our last session in May were considering the prior permits. The southern adjacent parcel, one, one, six, oh, six, two, one, zero, four, zero, zero. Uh, this has commercial uses on it currently, even though it is designated as rural residential resource. Those were approved through special use permits in nineteen ninety-five and two thousand and six. Those have, those have been approved through a administrative, administrative process with the special use. Critical oak areas regulations, um, those would be the same no matter which designation. And so it would not impact the regulations that would apply, but onsite trees would need to be reviewed to see if they meet the protected categories. And if they do meet that, they would need a reasonable use exception for removal and development and would need to comply with all applicable. Thurston County Code twenty-four point two five. Current existing neighborhood convenience commercial sites in Thurston County under Thurston County jurisdiction. Only ten of them meet that one acre maximum size guideline. Sixteen do not, and they are also approved in existing. So a quick refresh of our options. Option one was no change. Maintain the current future land use zoning. Option two was amend the land use and associated zoning of the applicant's parcel from rural residential resource one to five to neighborhood convenience commercial. And then three would amend the land use and associated zoning of the applicant's parcel. As well as the southern adjacent parcel from rural residential resource one to five to neighborhood convenience commercial. Just a quick reminder for this one, for the adjacent property, that property owner was contacted much earlier on in the process and they are interested in this. So. Just to look over all on one page, three different options. If you, I'll give you a few seconds. I can always go back if you guys would like me to. So the next steps is if we have any discussion we need to have. Um, and if and when that is over. I have three different options for recommendation if you so choose to go with one.
Thank you very much. We'll start out with questions or comments from the planning commission. Does anybody have any questions or? I'll start this conversation.
I've got one, and this is probably gonna go beyond what we're doing tonight and maybe fold into the actual comp plan update.
Yeah.
But what are the sizes of all those parcels that are large as a one day? I mean, I'm getting, my, my thought is maybe when we do the comp plan update, we need to change that if we've got that many. That higher percentage.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
The current criteria.
Yeah, I'm not sure of all the different sizes for the sixteen.
Yeah.
Well, sixteen areas, because some of them are compilations of multiple parcels.
That's a good point. I don't know who on staff needs to start looking into that one, but.
That would be something you may want to ask to add it into the review for comp plan.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion, Commissioner Nelson, and I just wrote that down. I think we can absolutely look into that as part of the update to the land use chapter.
Does anybody else have anything for Amelia?
Just in that postcards, this is a representation. It was just one.
I think that, um, if, if the planning commission did make a recommendation and we chose option three. That would be the one that would not only fit with our public comments, make the public commenters happiest. But it would probably make things easier on staff too, to have one big contiguous piece instead of having it, well, option two where it's split up.
Whatever is recommended is easiest on staff.
Yeah.
Well, the easiest thing on staff would be option one.
Don't worry about making it easy. Yeah, I am fully capable of any of these options.
Sure. Um, well.
Did you, did you all have a chance to review the two comments we got?
I did. I, and I don't know if, if people are ready to consider voting on any of this, yet or if any more questions answered, but. We could, we could certainly take an action now and make a recommendation if the commission was ready for that.
Make a motion.
You're welcome to make a motion.
Uh, move to recommend no change to the current land use and zoning to parcel one, one, six, oh, sixteen, one, oh, three, oh, oh. As presented under option one. On comprehensive code docket item CPA twenty-one, POG site specific land use plan and rezoning amendment.
Okay. You moved and seconded to. Recommend option one, which is no change, to move to recommend no change to the current land use and zoning for parcel one, one, six, oh, six, two, one, zero, three, zero, zero. As presented under option one on comprehensive code docket item CPA twenty-one, POG site specific land use plan and rezoning amendment. With that, is there any other? Any other discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to understand the reason for recommending option one.
Uh, because it's consistent with, um, the purpose of the zoning and I was, I didn't find. A persuasive and consistent reason to change it.
Even though there's a, a current commercial venture right there next to it?
Well, yeah, because the point is to discourage. So essentially, um, and the, and for those areas, my understanding is that it's to provide. Sort of basic services, and those appear to be present already, and we don't have any reason to. Believe from the discussions that we've had about this proposal, there's no reason to believe that there's anything. Uh, that will be substantially added that will. Make it compelling to rezone.
Or any other discussion on the motion?
Uh, I'm just gonna say, I'm really not sure where, where I stand on this one. Um, I don't know that there's more information that I need. I just don't know that. I don't know that I've come to a conclusion on what is right in my head yet.
Right, well, um, you're certainly welcome to it's same for a vote, but we have a motion that's been moved and seconded, so I am going to call for the vote.
Mr. Halverson?
Nay.
All right. Nay.
I.
Nay.
Vice Chair Dave?
All right.
Chair Casino?
Nay. Right, well, that motion has failed. If we want, if someone wanted to, um, present another motion, we would certainly entertain it. And if not, it is something that we can certainly. Think about on some and come back at a later time for, unless there is a, a second motion forwarded.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to recommend option three applicant and neighbor. Uh, move to recommend land use and zoning amendment of parcels, one, one, six, oh, six, two, one, oh, three, oh, oh. And one, one, six, oh, six, two, one, oh, three, oh, oh, from PRR, from. PRRR, one to five to NC as presented under option three on comprehensive code docket item CPA twenty-one. POG site specific land use plan and rezoning amendment. And my primary reason for that is it's consistent with what is existing at the location. It's a triangular lot, uh, very small along a major roadway. Provides additional, possible conditional, uh, resources for our local community. And that would be my recommendation.
Give it a second. It's been moved and seconded to. Adopt option three, which is to recommend a land use and zoning amendment of parcel one, one, six, zero, six, two, one, zero, three, zero, zero. And one, one, six, zero, six, two, one, zero, three, zero, zero, from rural RRR, one, five, to. Neighborhood commercial as presented under option three on comprehensive code docket item CPA twenty-one. POG site specific land use planning and rezone amendment. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
Uh, yeah, maybe, maybe I'm not reading right, but are the two parcels that are listed the same?
Yeah, motion three, the language, the two parcels are there.
It should be four, zero, zero for one of those.
So one, one, six, zero, six, two, one, zero, four hundred.
Yeah, my apologies. I could have made a lot of the tongue question too.
So the motion has amended to include three hundred and four hundred. Any other discussion?
No, I just think it's contrary to our planning policies, but.
And I think I would agree it's, it's contrary, and if we're gonna look at something like this to the comp plan, I think that's the right place to do it rather than.
And in fact, we're, we're going even more contrary by adding another property to the original request.
Any further discussion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All right.
Nay. Bye.
Mr. Wheatley?
Nay.
Mr. Nelson?
Nay.
Vice Chair Dave?
Nay.
Chair Casino?
All right, that motion fails. So with that, I think we're going to. Unless somebody would like to, um, forward option two.
So, uh, my question, I guess. Would this come under the comp plan? You know, discussions or?
I think it might be mine.
We also have the option that we could forward no recommendation to the, to the commission. That we were not able to come to consensus on any of the options. That is certainly within our purview as well.
Which would be, I mean, for tonight, that would be true because. If one person, I'm saying me specifically because I stated before that I'm not sure where I sit on this. But based on what we voted on tonight, even if I voted for one of those, neither of them would have passed.
Yeah, I, I think that, and I think that when, no matter what option passes out of this, there would probably be a minority report generated. And it would ref, the board accounting commissioners would understand that we did not have consensus on any of these. So the idea forwarding them no recommendation because we couldn't come to consensus would not be inconsistent with that.
So I guess I'm, I'm, my question then to say, Scott. When you talk about, what are the additional information that you're kind of seeking? Can we just find out what those things, questions are and then move this to the next?
I don't think that I'm seeking additional information. I think I just need to do more figuring to decide where I stand. Because I don't know. I mean. I don't know what I, what position I'm at here.
Have you, have you been out to the site, Scott? And you know the.
Oh, yeah, I, I grew up there.
Okay.
You know.
Yeah, I mean, I went out there personally and looked at it and I talked to several off of their presidents. Uh, they did not write, I was surprised to find that they did not submit comments about it. Because I did email them and told them that if they were interested in this, that they needed to submit comments, and I noticed that they had not submitted comments, so.
I'd also reached out to a homeowners organization, the area, they had a chat, they could never submit the comments. And it looks like we have somebody who raised hand.
Did somebody have a raised hand? Fisher, did you have something?
Uh, I moved to table this to our July fifth meeting.
It's been moved. Is there a second to table this or to?
I, I second that, I. Because I don't like sending, you know, like saying something that we at least haven't. I get the idea of maybe sending them something that we're undecided about, but I feel like, you know, we're here to send them a recommendation of some sort.
Are we allowed to send a pros cons list?
Yeah, with anything we send them, we can send them our findings of facts. Yeah, so we can, we can tell them anything that we want to tell them.
I mean, we could, I mean, if, I, I would support tabling it, but thinking about, you know, if we are, and if we do find ourselves in impasse, what's the best information that we could send to the board? To help their decision-making.
Well.
Is there additional information you're wanting to send them besides what's in the staff report and written comments?
I'm actually pretty close to Scott here on this one. It. Yeah, I, it's not an information. It's a. How does the information weigh on my decision? It's not a question of the information.
So my personally, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of a landowner. That has a parcel that's between a mi- main road and backed up against. I believe it's railroad. Oh, no, the railroad runs in front of the property.
There is a railroad to the west.
And to the.
And then Old Highway ninety-nine southeast to the east.
So it's a triangular square in the, kind of in a no man's land. You're not gonna put houses there because no one's gonna wanna live in a house with all of that traffic around it. Uh, it makes sense to make it commercial versus residential. It's certainly not gonna be ag or forest. It's too small. When I talked to the Offutt Lake folks, which live right there, you can see what, and the HOA that's right there, they were all for it to include the Lady of the Lake. Uh, resort area there. Uh, which that would be competitive competition, and that's what I pointed out, but that's, they were fine with that. Uh, because they didn't think it would be put into a store. Uh, you know, like sundries or stuff like that or food. They thought it would be art or some type of, uh. Small shop of some kind, and that's what we heard from the, the owner of the property too, although he could end up putting anything he wanted in there once this redesignated. And I understand that. If you take a look at the property and you take a look at the fact that it's got a train that runs by it and the Tacoma rail, that is a very active railroad. No one's gonna put residential in there. Nobody. And anybody that would is, they wouldn't have any type of sale anyway.
Well, I think, I, I, I don't know if we have a formal second from Commissioner Day on tabling this until. Or Jim had the formal, okay. So with that, we, we need to finish up that particular motion. To table this until July fifth, and then we'll have a discussion after this. If, if that motion passes, we'll have a discussion about. What we want to see for July fifth, so we can come to a conclusion. Is that fair? So with that, I call for the votes table this motion until our next meeting, July fifth.
Mr. Halverson?
I, I won't be here on July fifth, but we've already heard my name.
All right. All right.
Mr. Wheatley?
I.
Mr. Nelson?
All right.
Vice Chair Dave?
All right.
Chair Casino?
Nay, that's all right. So with that, that, that motion is going to be, or that discussion will be tabled in, or that vote will be tabled until July fifth. But I'd like to have a discussion about what we're going to need staff to bring back for us. Um, if there's anything specific we need, or if we're gonna go through the options again, please, Commissioner.
Yeah, could you, um, sort of make sure that we understand what, um, the code says. Would be reasons, compelling reasons to approve a rezoning. In other words. In what circumstances? Is it under the RCW or under county code? Under what circumstances, uh, would it be considered a good reason to rezone?
So I do have a section that's on page five of the staff report. Uh, it's labeled consistency with comprehensive plan that goes over a few things that might actually.
Well, maybe you can just, uh, have us, because I remember I, I read that and that was one of the reasons I voted the way that I did. That if everybody could review, you know, we could, it can be included for review or something like that.
Along those lines, of which I, I think would be helpful, is if you could dig out the findings from the hearing examiner on why. I bet you those findings would inform some of these decisions from the hearing examiners, special use. Uh, permits that were granted in ninety-five and oh-six on that center. Permits that were granted in ninety-five and oh six on that center lot.
There is also partially the likelihood on that for our comp plan to have changed. And our codes to have changed in regards to some of those decisions, so.
Yeah, I think that there might be some information that might inform some of the decisions we made. Commissioner Passinger.
Uh, I'm, I'm confused. Maybe somebody knows the answer to this, but there was different statements about the owners of. This property versus Lady of the Lake and Offutt Resort. I thought the Offutt Lake Resort and Lady of the Lake properties were the same Pogue family owners.
Yeah, Lady of the Lake, I don't know who owns, owns it personally.
It's the, the Pogue family.
Maybe that's why there's no conflict.
All right, well, with that, we do, um, we do have this tabled in until our next particular meeting. Amelia will bring back a little bit more information and hopefully everybody can do a deep dive in the meantime, please.
Could I actually get a majority on what I need to bring back that the commission is requesting me to bring?
Helen, do you want to sharpen up your point, Annie?
Um, well, just maybe re, you know, just include in the next packet the same. Thing that you had before.
It is still in the staff report that's provided.
Right, well, but will that be?
Sent out again.
Sent out again, or do you want to?
Yeah, so like the memo you guys got had a link to it, this one, and so it'll be the same.
Okay, I just want to be sure that people can go to that and read that.
Be on the website and everything, right?
Cam, Cam digging out those findings from the hearing examiner, is that a possibility or is that too deep?
It's totally a possibility if you guys have a majority.
Would anybody else like to see those hearing examiner findings? Think it might inform them their decision in some way?
The findings?
Ninety-five and oh six, is that too far out?
Had a few iterations.
I'm not, I don't, I don't feel the support here, so.
I'd be interested in that. I'd be, I'd agree to.
Okay, there's a majority.
All right, sounds good.
All right, thank you very much, and, and, uh, thank you for bringing that for us, um, bringing that back to us, but I don't think, um, I think we're done. With that topic for this evening. All right, thank you very much. Well, we are gonna move on to our next work session, well. Our next work session, which will be some follow-ups on the LTA zoning update. Understanding that we're not going to get very far into it tonight because our, our day is pretty gone, but I'm sure there's some stuff that we should hear, so. Back to you.
Thank you, Planning Commission, Maya Tople, Senior Planner with Community Planning. We do have a short PowerPoint and work session for you tonight, but, uh, the primary thing that I want to say is that we're not asking any sort of decision. From the Planning Commission at this time. We just want to go over some of the public comment that we heard and received. And recap some of that for you and then give you time to digest that before the July fifth meeting. So this is our third work session tonight, and I will again go over comments and the major themes that we heard in those public comments. Follow up on a couple of items. So at the last work session on May seventeenth, the Planning Commission had a couple of questions. Including a short summary on the current appeal from Futurewise, which is Growth Management Hearings Board Case. Twenty dash two dash oh 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 one. So I'll provide a very short, high level summary of that. I'll go over a summary of the test out option that we were asked to look into and what we did in the past when we had an agriculture zoning update. And then we'll have a short talk about soils, which is, a lot of the comments we received were on soils. Specifically the written comments that we received. So quick summary of comments, I can't in any way relay everything that you heard tonight and that is in the written comments. But the major themes that we heard in the fifty written comments that we received is that. A lot of the questions were property specific about why people's individuals' properties were included. And some of those folks hit on things like they have a mine on their property that's, doesn't seem appropriate. How could that be designated as prime farmland? They have a primarily wooded property and soils that support woodland but can't grow agriculture. We've received comments from people that have wetlands and sinkholes that are filled with water year round on their property. And how could that possibly be included? We also did continue to receive comments on the irrigation topic on both sides. We received comments that were in support of considering that further for exclusion. And comments that also indicated that should not be a criteria for exclusion, whether a property is irrigated or not, because that can change over time. And then we received a lot of comments around soils that must be drained in order to be used as prime farmland. And concerns related to critical area habitat for organ-spotted frog and for other endangered and threatened species. Continuing on, we heard quite a bit around designated forest land from landowners that have their properties within designated forest land. And what the impacts would be to that, specifically that those properties have harvest plans that typically say. Timber turning is around forty to sixty years, and so the long-term use through that designation is already. Timber, which seems inconsistent with the long-term agriculture designation. As a note, you can have an agriculture property that is enrolled in the designated forest land program. Those two things don't affect each other. But, uh, the comment really gets at the intent of the use of the property over the long term, so, um, we are thinking about that a little bit more. We received a number of comments that have asked us to consider smaller parcels when they're adjacent to some of these areas we're looking at. Including, uh, right now we have the cutoff at twenty acres or fifteen acres for some of the options. And folks have said if, if there's a smaller parcel that's kind of lumped into that, then it should be included, and that's something that we need to look into in the options. Other comments said that we should consider the farmlands of statewide importance, which is a, a new addition to state law. And we did note that in the memo. That's not something that we mapped with our stakeholder group and talked about in depth. But we have some comments that ask us to look into that further. We received comments from landowners asking for an, a voluntary opt-in where individuals can voluntarily. Protect their parcel from future subdivision. And then some additional comments to consider things that were not discussed by the stakeholder group, like if excluding agriculture. From the McAllister geologically sensitive area is still appropriate. Finally, a common theme through almost all of the comments that we heard is compensation for lost development rights. That is probably the single most. Uh, important topic that we heard from landowners in the room tonight and also in the written comments. And there were some suggestions that we received on chapter three language, fairly minor, nothing, nothing major in terms of policy changes. But just some clarifying additions to the chapter three language, which we can certainly do in future updates as we move this project forward. And so I'm gonna pass it off to Ashley to talk about some of the additional outreach that we did.
So in addition to the comments that we received, um, we, I, I attended, um, one of the monthly Olympia Master Builders Meeting. We really focused on that cluster requirement, um, and so they, they highlighted concerns around designated. Designated lands that require irrigation to be considered prime. They think there are competing needs for water rights. That also extends to the cluster requirement, um, to get the most flexibility in a cluster subdivision. You'd wanna put in a community water system. To put in a community water system, you need water rights. So you're just further. Further taking water rights that would potentially be used for ag and then reallocating them to that residential use. They also said it, it is difficult to make those cluster developments pencil. Without some kind of density bonus or other incentives. And I'll just kind of leave it at that. A lot of the other concerns they brought up were, were echoed, um, here tonight, and I'm happy to circle back. But I just wanna make sure we get through everything. In addition to sitting down with the Olympia Master Builders, um, also thanks to Ken Miller. Who I think is here, we're able to pull together kind of a last minute, um, meeting with the Washington Farm Forestry Association that we held here. Heard both an opt-out and opt-in, um, for LTA zoning, um, was of interest to them. There was also a request for staff to look at how many parcels, um, that are included in these options are enrolled in that, um, assessor's program. For forest reuse rather than ag use, um, which we, we were able to pull that and we'll be sharing that. Fell including primate irrigated and primate drained soils doesn't make sense given their limitations. Um, and agreed compensation is key for those lost development rights.
So responding to the request from the Farmer Forestry Association, we did pull the numbers on designated forest land. And how much of these new LTA options include land that is currently enrolled in the assessor's designated forest land program? And it's about thirty percent across the board on all the options. So for the baseline option, that's around seven thousand acres and. Uh, if I'm remembering correctly, I think that option is about twenty-two thousand acres of new LTA, so. About a, a third of that is designated forest land, and for scenario one, it drops down to four thousand. Of course, that's a smaller option, only around twelve thousand new acres, and then scenario two is around fifty-six hundred designated forest land. There are a couple of small properties that are in the timberland designation, which is a different land use code. And that, uh, is the Board of County Commissioners, uh, timberland, uh, open space tax program. So a little bit different, uh, but we are seeing that a substantial number of the new LTA areas. Uh, are within the designated forest land, uh, program through the assessor's office. Just a quick summary, I don't wanna spend too much time on this because we don't have a lot of time tonight, and I can certainly talk more about this if there are. Additional questions, but I did provide the comment from Futurewise on the twenty nineteen comprehensive plan update. In the Planning Commission's packet for tonight, if you wish to reference it, uh, they provide great detail about what their concerns were, and it is essentially. The, the ag piece in there is essentially what we were appealed on. So in early twenty twenty, we were appealed by Futurewise. And they alleged that the county failed to designate lands meeting long-term agriculture criteria. And that it was inconsistent with, uh, zoning and land use, specifically because of the soils piece and that we failed to include new soils. They also alleged that we failed to achieve a variety of rural densities to protect rural character. That's kind of a big bullet point that we've had in past appeals, but in, um, conversations with Futurewise before. The appeal really got going, that was, um, aimed kind of at the same thing with the long-term ag designation. And, uh, the, the, excuse me, the regulations around long-term agriculture. And then item three was that we failed to review and revise our capital, capital facility plan. In the twenty nineteen update, we did some shuffling about where that part of the comp plan lived, and so that was just kind of an accident. Item three ended up being dismissed. And so we're currently under settlement extension. Uh, we do extensions on a ninety day basis. And again, at hand, the primary issue was that we were using the nineteen ninety soil survey, which was outdated. And the new web soil survey that was available from USDA include twenty-nine new prime farmland soils that the county must consider for. Potential long-term agriculture designation. So that's the short summary. Moving on, another, I'll also provide a short summary of this. So we did look into doing a test out option. And we very quickly realized that we were not prepared, uh, to do, to offer something like this with the postcard mailing that went out. And that more work was needed, uh, but it's certainly something we can do in the future. So in two thousand eight, Thurston County. Was doing an agriculture zoning update and at that time provided a one-time opportunity for land owner, land owners to test out. And, uh, that was only for the new long-term agriculture areas, so not people who were previously designated, only the new areas. It was a very extensive process, so we hired a consultant to develop a field methodology. And kind of a checklist that landowners would need to follow. Landowners then had to hire individual soil survey consultants. To do a soil review on the site and submit those reports to the county within a specified timeframe. And then the county hired a third-party consultant to review those reports and determine, one, if it met the methodology that was outlined. And two, if it warranted exclusion from, um, the update, uh, the new soils that were potentially being included. So we can certainly look into offering something like this, and we will present this to the Board of County Commissioners as an option for their consideration. It will certainly impact timing of the project and also budget, so there are considerations that the board will need to weigh around that. We did receive some comment from Futurewise about this specifically and the two thousand eight update with the test out option. They recommend against a test out option because the soil series that USDA uses has a range of characteristics. That they look at on the property for soils, and their argument is that any individual soil sample is unlikely to meet. What is in that soil description and that this was actually the case in the oh eight, oh nine tests. So based on those soil surveys, the county pulled out two hundred and some acres. And we were appealed on that again by Futurewise, and we, we had to essentially do a swap even after those test out soil surveys were provided to us. So, um, there are some considerations there, but we will certainly propose that as an option to the Board of County Commissioners. Moving forward, once we get to that stage in the process, whenever that is. And passing back to Ashley.
Okay, so soils, I have learned a lot about soils in the last month. Part of this is gonna be a review of things you've already heard and then sort of carrying it forward based on all the public comments we have received as well as. Feedback that we've gotten from the Agriculture Advisory Committee and folks like, like at the Washington Farms and Forestry Association. So, and that new prime farmland soils list, the twenty twenty-two one, of the twenty-nine soil types, eleven are identified as. Primate irrigated, eight are primate drained. When we started talking about water, I brought, I brought that water question back to the Ag Advisory Committee and I was like, well, what do you think about, you know? Considering water as part of the designation and rezoning process. They, they had a discussion, it wasn't a formal motion or anything, but they did advise that water is dynamic. It is quickly diminishing, um, and it should not be taken into consideration. Like, we should not assume that these lands have water rights. What we should be looking at are what is the capability of those soils without irrigation? Instead of the twist, which is assume they're irrigated. They also pointed to a section in the soil survey, which under state law we're allowed to look at. Called the Land Capability Classification System. It's basically a more, and there's a lot of folks here that know how to use this better than me. Um, I'm quickly trying to get up to speed, but it's essentially a more refined way to look at all of the soils that are listed in that prime farmland soils. List that we're, that we have been using. And the, the nice thing about that, um, that land capability classification system, it's a mouthful. Is that it assumes that the lands aren't irrigated. So when they tell you whether that soil type, um, is capable of agriculture. And what types of agriculture, it assumes that there are no water rights. So we sort of, like, as we go through these different steps, started digging into these primate irrigated, primate drained soils. What does it really mean, um, if, if these lands don't have water rights and/or they're covered in wetlands and? Just with our current, current regulatory framework, we're not gonna allow them to drain those wetlands. And so what I found in the, and, and I'm everywhere, you see quotes, this is straight out of the soil survey, this is not staff speaking. But ten of those eleven primate irrigated and seven of the primate drain soils are classified, it's, they're basically four S's and four W's. Is very severely limited and are requiring very careful management for agricultural production. I am in the process of trying to put together a summary memo that can walk you through in the same way that I had to get walked through how to use. Um, the soil survey, um, hopefully a more nuanced way than just looking at the prime farmland soils list. And being able to just consider that, um, as you reflect on all the public comment that you have received. I, I apologize, it was not ready for tonight. Um, it'll come with a nice fancy spreadsheet to go along with it. That's customized just for Thurston County, um, but I just wanted to let you know that we are hearing people. Comments about ground proofing and hey, these lands, I, I can't grow anything on them, and as we started digging into this. The most common soils ser- series are the ones with the largest acreage, um, just to give you a sneak peek are like the Alderwood and Indianola soils. Which are, um, identified as being, uh, grapefruit woodland and dug for Christmas trees. And then they're under. And then on the other, on the other end of the spectrum, we've got like the spanaway and spanaway and this valley series, which are identified in the soil survey is really, there are prairie soils. It's where we've got our gopher habitats and um is intensive or commercially significant agriculture the appropriate use of that? Or is it conservation, conservation grazing and concert with our habitat conservation plan? Um, so in any event, that's just kind of a, a sneak peek, um, so that you know that we are trying to be responsive to the feedback we're hearing and give you more information. I'm happy to answer questions.
Commissioner Pestiger, did you have something?
Yeah, um, I'm just curious with the large volume of comments about, you know, people saying this is not ready for primetime, this has not been thought through, this has got a lot of holes in it. There's a lot of mistakes, there's stuff that's designated improperly, doesn't match what it says it's supposed to match in terms of either soil or farming capability. Um, what is the staff's view on how accurate are those comments? And is there more work needed to refine the properties that are included in this or not included in this? Or do you feel like we're really solid on our, on our current maps?
I, I think the maps reflect the list of soils that are identified as prime farmland um in the soil survey. But that list, as it has been expanded, includes more soils that have these limitations. Um, and so what staff hopes to bring is more information, a more refined analysis, instead of just looking at, you know, this long list of soil types and not really understanding um which ones are more capable of supporting agriculture and which ones are less capable? And what are the limitations that might exist? Um, just being able to provide that info um that based on planning commission feedback, you know, could, could change the maps.
Yeah.
And I'll just add, oh, I'm sorry, I, I will just add that uh we did have four open houses prior to ever taking this to the planning commission, and we did kind of a broad sweep. We didn't do a mail out for that, uh, but we, you know, we try to save the mail out for when we have some baked options so that we're really targeting the people that are affected. But this is exactly what we were hoping for with this public hearing. This is the kind of feedback that we wanted to get from the community. And by no means is it harmful for us to change the options based on the feedback that we've received. That's, that's really what the intent of the public hearing was, was to hear those kinds of comments that were made.
Thank you. Um, also, is it intended, you mentioned the test-out, and I was reading through that element of it. Is, is that intended that we are going to do a test-out option again? Or is that something you're asking us to lay in on?
We're not asking a direction from the planning commission on the test-out, but we will offer that to the board to um potentially consider offering a test-out again with this update to the community. And so that will be a decision that the county commissioners will make, uh, since it will have budget ramifications and we're, we're require budget amendments for uh doing that.
Thank you, sounds good.
Any other questions here?
Um, I just want to make, well, I guess first, um, Commissioner Pestiger and the not ready for primetime. I don't really agree with that statement that was made, but on the other hand, I kind of do. Because my emphasis in moving to a public hearing was some of the same issues that were brought up. But I wasn't sure that until we had a public hearing, we were going to be able to move anywhere on those issues. Um, you know, the soil stuff I had brought up several times. Um, so I mean, I guess it, it depends on your view of whether it was ready for primetime. I mean, I think obviously we would like to have gone through the whole thing and had everything just the way we wanted it. But I, but sometimes this is just how we move forward. Um, a couple of things and kind of why I wanted to try to do this earlier. Um, the, that were brought up tonight, the taxes issue, maybe staff can expand, but I don't. And getting changed from long, from one to five to long-term ag is not going to change your designation if you're in the tax program, I don't think.
You, you are correct, and I made a note to follow up on that and then forgot. But yes, it, or you're correct, it won't change.
The other one that, that I heard was use versus zone. There is nothing in our zoning code that says that you have to do anything based on your zoning. I mean, there's plenty of people that have long-term ag land that don't farm. There's plenty of people that have residential land that don't have houses. Um, and the other one that I heard that maybe we need to look at was the co-designation issue. And um, what is, what is allowed and not allowed? Because I think I'm, I'm going, I don't remember what the county commissioners did, but I believe that the planning commission moved a few years ago to co-designate uh mineral lands and long-term ag on the idea that at fifty percent, you could ha- actually have ha- a parcel that's half a farm and another part of that same parcel that's not. But if you're, if we're, if we're going to say that, I don't think we can say that these, those uses aren't allowed there. So, um, I think that was my three big takeaways from the hearing tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Nelson. Now, I'm happy to bring back information on the co-designation with mineral lands at the next meeting since that, I worked on that project in twenty seventeen to twenty twenty. Um, if the commission doesn't mind, before we move to a quick discussion, I just want to do kind of a um wrap-up of what Ashley and I are planning at looking at next. So we do want to kind of revise some of these draft maps based on the public comment that we've heard and specifically looking at soils and uh how we can maybe adjust for some of the comments that we've heard around soils. So at the next work session, we plan on bringing back some more detailed information around soils. I don't know for sure if we'll have maps yet, but we're going to try and bake some new maps for the planning commission to consider based on those public comments. Some other things that I will bring as follow-up is uh the comment that we heard around farmland of statewide importance. We will certainly have some more information on that. We'll look into some of the comments we heard on including parcels that are adjacent but smaller than the minimum parcel size, whether that's twenty acres or fifteen acres. And uh, the co-designation piece with mineral lands, I'll bring back a summary of that for the commission at the next meeting. So I'll, I'll wrap that up. We do have two more work sessions planned on this before we ask for a recommendation. But is there any other hot items that the planning commission wants to hear about at the next work session?
Commissioner Day.
Um, I really liked the table that you had for the uh, for the timber uses in the, that would fall under the current proposal. Do we have that same data for uh current use agriculture?
We do have that data for um the agriculture that is affected in the options, and I can certainly bring that back for the planning commission in the table format.
That would be great, that was a fantastic table, works for my brain. Does any, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to speak to, you mentioned use versus zoning. That also applies to like the application of our critical areas ordinance, our habitat conservation plan. Um, that it is tied to the activity being pre- being proposed or the, the use that exists rather than the zone. Um, and so, and that ag activities, critical areas ordinance, that would apply to ag activities on a rural residential parcel as well as a long-term parcel. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Good. Yeah, this is kind of going back and it's a, it's a kind of a simplistic question, you know, goes way back in the process. But um, you know, I was kind of sitting there looking at the uh, you know, the map, the maps, the scenario one, scenario two baseline. Um, and I was just wondering if, I mean, and you know, maybe this is just, I need a reminder, but what, were there any criteria other than soil type that were used to decide what kind of fell out from the baseline map to those different scenarios? Like there are certain parts of the county where um, you know, the, the possible new LTA zoning. Well, in other words, how did you decide what to cut? You know, from the baseline to the two scenarios, what criteria were used to decide what to keep in and what to exclude besides, I mean, because all of them presumably you started with the soil type.
Yes.
So, so what criteria were used to cut?
It, um, it was the percentage of the parcel that contained that, those prime farmland soil types. And then the other thing that differs in the other two scenarios are the parcel size, minimum parcel size, and the blocks of agricultural land. And so, you know, one of them has a larger and smaller. And I think there, there's a table in the May seventeenth one that outlines them that Commissioner Day might have right there.
Six and seven.
Thank you.
And there are some other exclusionary criteria that we did not change because that was not part of the scope that was set by the Board of County Commissioners. But just to summarize that, um, no parcels within urban growth areas. We actually did look into that one, and the stakeholder group concurred that that was not something that uh we needed to do with this zoning update. Uh, nearby access to road, rail, or air routes for markets. And then outside of natural shoreline environments is one of the designation criteria. So right now, the map does reflect that. Um, we have continually told uh both stakeholders and the public that once we have a final shoreline master program update, these maps might change even a little bit further with those new shoreline designations, so.
Thanks.
On, we hear a lot on the question of, of regulatory taking and compensation for doing such. Has there been any work at all or any contemplation on if that would even be feasible? Is there a funding source anywhere that could pay these people if we take away development rights from them?
There isn't a current funding source, other than the ones that you're probably familiar with, like conservation futures and whatnot. We did receive Habitat Strategic Initiative grant to open up the transfer development rights program as well as the purchase of development rights program, really just all of them.
Did you say conservation futures program?
Yes, that, that is probably the, the primary one that, that you're familiar with, but it's not at this scale, obviously.
Yeah.
And so, yes, there is a commitment to that grant to look at all those programs, see if we even have the right mix of programs. Um, and then what are the innovative funding solutions that other counties in Washington or throughout the country are using for them? Um, but it's, it's going to, to lag, like, we don't even have a contract from the state yet to kick that grant work off.
I guess my big concern on that is, or what I think the big challenge is, I, I don't have any idea what those takings would cost the county. But something tells me it's going to be eight, nine, or ten figures. And then when you see things like our conservation futures program only has about seven million bucks in it, that's not going to go very far, even if you could use it, so you couldn't. So I'm, I don't know how, I don't know how you would ever be able to pay people for this kind of taking. Um, and as such, I'm very reluctant to do any kind of taking. But we'll have those discussions.
Are there?
To be clear, I don't think it classically qualifies as a regulatory taking. It is a lost value for sure. It doesn't qualify as regulatory taking.
That's probably not qualifies as regulatory taking, but nonetheless, that's exactly what it is.
It is exactly not what it is. It is a reduction in value, but it is not a regular.
Yeah, it's the same thing, but a different.
Are there any, you know, in looking at the scenarios and the, the different options on percentage, percentage of the, the parcel that's in prime farmland soils or the, the size of the parcels or the agricultural blocks? As if we are to develop a new set of maps or, is there any feedback on any of those pieces which weren't really brought up tonight? Um, but it would be great if you have some thoughts, and you also don't need to share them, um, if you're not ready to.
Can you say the question again?
Oh, sorry, my meandering, nine o'clock question. Um, just those other pieces that differentiate the scenarios. Um, and so that was the fifty percent of the parcel being in prime farmland soils versus seventy-five and fifteen or twenty acre minimum parcel size.
Well, I just want to remind the, the commission that we did discuss that at the last meeting so we could review some of that discussion. It's very important.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it goes to that issue. I mean, I, as I recall, uh, one of the arguments for, um, I don't remember if it was the percentage of the parcel size. I think it was the parcel size. I mean, this, this concept of compensation was one of the major reasons for going for the larger.
The seventy-five percent.
Yeah, seventy-five percent.
Hmm. It, it's late, I'll just let that lie, but um, be thinking about those two.
Yeah, this is a big project.
It is.
Does anybody have any, I, I would like to wrap this up. Does anybody have anything else pressing on this issue tonight that we probably should think about before our next work session?
I, I would like to hear more about the regulatory taking and the not. I, I'm kind of curious about that, I think that's important. I, and for me, it would be, are we going to take this property and not be able to compensate them because of the kind of, not necessarily loophole, because I don't understand.
Well, I think just to be clear, there's a, like, there's tons of case law on what is and isn't a regulatory taking. This wouldn't be a regulatory taking in the sense that it requires just compensation.
Right.
So it's not.
I, I kind of get that, but you know, I, I, it would feel bad to do that to somebody.
Yeah.
To be clear, it is in impact.
Yeah.
That's why.
All right, well, uh, with that, I think we'll uh finish up this item for tonight and uh come back to it at our next work session. Uh, so with that, we've, we've worked through um our staff updates, our calendar, and uh we're going to hold off our, our discussion on the um meeting that we had this morning with the board for our next good of the order. Um, does anybody else have any additional things that would be good for the order? Well, having no further business, this meeting is adjourned.